Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, February 7th School Committee Meeting to order. Before we go into routine matters, Ms. Saros would like to make a statement.
I just want to take this time to mention the loss that Braintree, Boston, and the surrounding communities have had to deal with in the few weeks, in the last few weeks. Officer John O'Keefe was a 1994 graduate of Braintree High School and moved on to become a Braintree, Boston cop, sorry. He tragically passed away a few weeks ago and was buried today. In his short life, he was dealt with the task of caring for his sister and brother, sister and brother-in-law's children when they sadly passed away a few years ago. To the O'Keefe family, the Braintree schools and community as a whole are with you and are praying for you at this time of unspeakable tragedy and grief. If we could all just take a moment to reflect on this loss.
Thank you, Ms. Saros. Moving into routine matters, approval of minutes from open session, January 24th, 2022. I know Mary Ann, Mary Ann sent out some corrections earlier, so everyone has the latest version. Are there any additional corrections?
Madam Chair, I could hear it, I just couldn't respond, so I heard the entire meeting in its entirety, so I believe I should be able to, to vote.
Certainly.
And not abstain.
I would agree, Mr. Devon. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Ms. Saros, I believe, or Ms. Cobblemane, and second by Mr. Devon. All those in favor? Oops, excuse me, roll call, since we are meeting virtually, all votes must be roll call votes. So with that, Mr. Devon.
Aye.
Ms. Cobblemane.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to communications and combinations, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I get started, Mr. Brace, could you check your text and send the link to the mayor, please? In, in your packets, you will find a few items that call for your attention. One is an update from the South Shore Educational Collaborative. It's their January update, which you can read through at your leisure. The other is the Mass Association of School Committee Bulletin that has also come out, again, for your perusal as we get into, through January and into the extended February month, that seems a lot shorter as the days get a little bit longer. Couple other items to bring to your attention. One, we actually got notice today from our music department that final district level auditions were held for semesters. They were able to brave the ice and still bring 47 students out to Abington High School to audition for Southeastern Massachusetts School Bandmasters Association. Out of these 47 students, 36 made it to their leveled ensembles. These are students ranging from grade seven through grade 12. The junior groups are grades seven through nine, the senior groups are nine through 12. So, you know, again, it was notice that we received today of a successful weekend for our music and band folks, so we congratulate all of them for that. The other thing that is in your packet that has already changed, you've got an initial notification that today we were to have the groundbreaking at what will become the New South Middle School. Because of the weather, it has been rescheduled, so I call your attention to the rescheduled date, which is this Wednesday, February 9th. It will be held at 10:30 a.m. at South Middle School. And we're all looking forward to that and then seeing that project get off the ground and really moving forward quickly. If you've been out to the site, you can see there's a lot of work that's already been done. But there's a lot more work to be done and they're anxiously getting into it, and we'll, we'll celebrate that on Wednesday at 10:30. Madam Chair, that's what I have for communications.
Excellent. I also look forward to the groundbreaking on Thursday. A lot of work has gone into that, so it's very exciting to see it actually coming to fruition. Moving on to gifts to schools, so we have three gifts, and again, I will read all three gifts and we can do one motion and one vote. Bay State Textiles Gift to Schools totaling $98.25. South Middle School Gift to Schools totaling $2,414.70 from Life Touch Fundraising. And Braintree High School Gift to Schools in the amount of $250 from Quincy College to be used for the Ninth Annual Credit for Life Fair scheduled on March 17th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Cobblemane, second by Ms. Saros. Roll call vote. The mayor has still not joined us, I believe. Mr. Devon.
Aye.
Ms. Cobblemane.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, as always, we are always very appreciative of the gifts. Moving on to, from superintendent and staff, Mr. Lee.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. In your packet is, again, the proposed changes to the Braintree High School Program of Studies. As you recall, at our last meeting, we went through a first reading of this document. There are not any real significant changes to it, but there are some, so this would be the second reading for that proposal so that we can begin the process of printing out programs of studies so students can select courses for next year.
Are there any questions about the program of studies from, since the last meeting? From anybody?
Madam Chair, I have a
Ms. Tuffy.
Comment.
Ms. Tuffy, go ahead.
Okay, so first, I'd like to thank everybody involved in preparing the program of studies. Braintree High is offering some great academic courses along with a variety of electives, and I plan to vote in favor of this program of studies. But that said, I do have some reservations about replacing math support courses with MCAS tutoring during studies. And just as I am concerned about the elimination of support courses at the middle school last year in reading, writing, and math connections, so I'm hoping that we will be able to provide those academic support courses again in the future. I know that it's tricky to balance course selections with budget, but I do think that those are important for our students who are struggling.
Thank you, Ms. Tuffy. Are there any other comments or questions about the program of studies? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the VHS Program of Studies 2022-2023 school year?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemane.
Second.
Second by Ms. Saros. Roll call vote. Maek Kukhors.
Aye.
Mr. Devon.
Aye.
Ms. Cobblemane.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So that is approved unanimously. Thank you all. Moving on to administrative updates. Again, Mr. Lee.
Thank you again. A couple items related to calendar that I'd like to go over with the committee. The first is the 2022-2023 calendar that has been before the committee previously. There was an error in the calendar in terms of how we constructed it. On the calendar that you approved previously, we had Monday of June as the 10th. It's actually the 19th, I'm sorry, it's the 12th. So we had to make that adjustment because our dates were wrong. The 10th was actually a Saturday, the following Monday is the 12th. So that is one correction that needed to be made, you know, so I would ask that we make that adjustment at this point in time.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. Do you want to make a motion to, to update the 2022-23 calendar with that one correction?
So moved, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cobblemane. Roll call vote. Maek Kukhors.
Aye.
Mr. Devon.
Aye.
Ms. Cobblemane.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much.
Any other administrative updates?
The, the next calendar item is just to call attention to the committee of our present school calendar. As you all know, on Friday, we again had to cancel school. The weather is simply not cooperating with us too much this year, which at this point in time would make the last day of school with four snow days, June 23rd of this year. However, you also will recall that we had some issues at the high school at the very beginning of the school year, which at this point still requires them to pick up three additional days, which would bring their last day of school to the 28th of June. So this is something we're monitoring. You know, obviously, we're, we're not through with winter. There's a ways to go. You know, we, we need to get the 180 days in. We have been in conversations with the state about some options, but more importantly, I just want to bring your attention to this, this growing issue as, as we sit here early February with a lot of winter left, you know, as, as we get closer to the end of June in our school calendar, so.
Good for that.
Couple other administrative updates just to make you aware of. One is a survey that we have going out, and I'd ask Assistant Superintendent Courtney Miller to bring you up to speed on that.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, and Chairperson Heager. So we just wanted to make everybody aware that we're anticipating sending out a survey, hopefully to all families in the district tomorrow about our homework policies. A couple of discussions have come about in our school curriculum board meetings, which is a combination of teachers across the district, K through 12, as well as administrators, just asking some questions in light of everything that students have been through, some social emotional learning that we've been talking about, and then also the fact that some of our school committee policies haven't been reviewed in a number of years. So this is just a very baseline survey, trying to get some feedback from families about how, at the elementary, the middle, and the high school level, families are feeling homework is being successful or maybe not so successful at home. So again, it's really just for informational purposes so that we can take a look at how families are feeling in the district.
I'm just curious, when was the last time we reviewed the homework policy?
So the elementary policy is dated from 2007, middle school is 2011, and our high school policy is the most recent one. I believe it is 2016.
Great. Thank you. Any questions about the survey for Ms. Miller?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Mr. Devon.
Thank you. It's through the chair. Ms. Miller, is this a situation where obviously we're gathering information and what we'll do is we will look at the individual policies based on the grade levels and make suggestions to the policy subcommittee? Am I correct?
That's correct, depending on how the survey looks. So again, at this point, it's really just informational, but yes, if there was a need to move anything forward, it would certainly go to Policy and Education Subcommittee first.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Any other questions or? Any other administrative updates, Mr. Lee?
The, the last administrative update, again, just to make the committee aware, as I believe you all know, the state has provided the opportunity for families and staff to get at-home test kits. We were scheduled to roll out to families on Friday, and again, we obviously did not have school on Friday. Those test kits were distributed in our schools today and sent home with students so that they can take them at their leisure and, you know, with their families. Just to give you some sense of numbers, there's no consent form to be completed, but if you wanted a kit, you had to signify that by opting into the program. We had 1,270 students opt into the program thus far, and we've had 316 staff members opt into the program thus far. For families or staff members who still want to participate, they can still opt in. We'll be running out tests every two weeks as we receive them from the state, and obviously, all in an effort to, to make sure that the schools remain as safe as possible as we go into the spring season. But just informational, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the committee? All right. Thank you for the update. I, I was curious with the numbers, so that's, that's interesting. 1,270 students and 316 staff. And as you said, they can opt in at any time, so there's no deadline, so if they haven't signed up yet, they still have plenty of time if they're interested. Okay. Good to know. Thank you. Is that the last?
That is the last of my administrative updates.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to from the school committee, student representatives updates. Who would like to give us an update?
Thank you. So not much to say this week, but I just want to say thank you to all of those who helped with cleaning up the snow for the snow days so all the students can get back to school and looking forward to have a full week this, this week and see what happens, but just wanted to say that.
Thank you. I'm sure the DPW would appreciate that. Any, any other updates from anyone? Okay. Moving on, Maek Kukhors, would you like to give us an update on the high school?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In speaking with Facilities Director, they have completed all of the shut-offs being installed in the science rooms as well as all of the bathrooms. So that piece of the project is complete. I think they're still working on maybe creating better zones, additional zones throughout the school. And I think it, you know, we've, we've had discussions, the council has already voted in regards to creating a combined facilities and because we're getting close to the point of budgeting, I think that at this point, I would request that the Committee on Finance would take a look at and listen to a presentation from the DPW in regards to doing the combination of, of facilities, and at least sometime in March, maybe we could take a look at it as a, as a board. And I think that, you know, it's, you know, we're halfway there. It's really up to the school committee to make that final decision, and I would just ask that when we get, the next time we have a finance meeting, maybe you could take, you know, take the opportunity to listen to that presentation and eventually try to get it before us one way or the other. So I'll make sure that they reach out to Superintendent Lee and yourself and come up with a date that works for both of yous.
Great. The Finance Committee, Finance and Operations is meeting on March 3rd and March 17th. So we do have those two meetings scheduled so we can figure out what works best for everyone.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Maek Kukhors. Moving on to the Subcommittee Membership Update. There are a number of subcommittees that school committee members serve on. So over the last few weeks, I reached out to all members of the school committee to see what their preferences and their interests were. So I'm just going to read through each one of the committees and the school committee representatives. So Finance and Operations, Mr. Lynch, Ms. Tuffy, and myself. Policy Education, Ms. Cobblemane, Mr. Lynch, and Ms. Tuffy. Braintree Alliance for Safe and Healthy Youth, or BASHI, Ms. Saros and Ms. Cobblemane. Special Needs Parent Advisory Council Liaison, or CPAC, that would be me. The Increment Committee, Ms. Saros. Parks, Playgrounds, Sports Complex, and Peterson Pool is Mr. Lynch. Legislative Liaison is Ms. Tuffy. District Level Emergency Management Team Liaison is Ms. Saros. School Advisory Board Liaison is me. School Building Committee, which is not a subcommittee of the school committee, but rather a town committee, Mr. Devon and myself. And then negotiations, we are coming into negotiations with all the unions this year. So Ms. Saros, Ms. Cobblemane, and myself. So those are the assignments. And I would encourage Policy and Education to set up their first meeting. And as I said, Finance and Operations has a couple as we, as we move into the, the budget cycle. So if there are any questions or comments, let me know, but those are the assignments going forward. So thank you all for your willingness to serve on, on each one of these subcommittees. I appreciate it. I know it's a lot of time and a lot of work that's done in these subcommittees, and then those recommendations by the subcommittees are moved forward to the full committee with their recommendations. So again, thank you all for your willingness to serve on these subcommittees. Moving on, Finance and Operations Subcommittee Updates. As I said, we have two meetings scheduled. We did meet on February 2nd. Mr. Lynch, Ms. Tuffy, Mr. Cronin, Mr. Lee, and myself. It was the very beginnings of the process, so we just did a very high-level discussion of the preliminary FY 2023 budget requirements. We did talk briefly as well as about the changes or, or, you know, what transpired in FY 2022. So we'll be working closely with the mayor and the town hall going forward, and as I said, we're meeting again on March 3rd and March 17th. And again, we're, right now, we have meetings scheduled for every Monday in March, and just again, because we're moving into the budget cycle. So again, the Subcommittee will report progress to the full committee in each one of those meetings in March. Are there any questions about Finance and Operations? Hearing none? Okay. So before we move into public comments.
Madam Chair, I was wondering if I could, you know, in the spirit of having a productive conversation, I know we all saw 25 emails from, you know, the town about mask mandates. I wonder if, you know, the members, we could kind of discuss the mask mandate policy.
It's not an agenda item, but I did want to acknowledge those emails that we received. There are about 30 emails, as you said, Mr. Lynch. And there was a lot of information, a lot of compelling information in those emails, so I do want to acknowledge the receipt of those emails. There seemed to be some confusion as to whether or not we were voting on something to do with the mask mandate tonight. It was never on the agenda. It was never planned to be on the agenda for tonight's meeting. As we've said, we are under the state mandate until the 28th. We will revisit whatever the, the state decides on the 28th. And if this body needs to make a decision based on, you know, what the, what the state decides, we can certainly schedule a meeting on March 1st. And, you know, talk about if there's, again, if there's anything that this body needs to, to make a, a decision upon. But for right now, we are going to the 28th. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Lynch.
So I appreciate that, Madam Chair, at least for acknowledging it. And I think the biggest thing is, I mean, we keep kind of kicking it down the road, you know, it's, oh, we're under this requirement, we're under this requirement. And I think the parents, what they're trying to get across is that that's not okay anymore, you know what I mean? So it's like, where do we fit in if, if they're coming to us to understand that, yet you get nothing from Destiny and CDC? And we just say, oh, we can't do anything till next month, where I just think it would be, you know, nice to have a productive debate about it, you know, see where we all stand, why each side goes on that. But it's, it's kind of a hot item where, you know, a lot of parents in town keep talking about it, so.
No, it's definitely a hot item, and as I said, I want to acknowledge the, all the emails, 30 odd emails, and again, a lot of data, a lot of compelling information. But again, we're not doing anything until we hear what the state decides on the 28th. And again, we can schedule a meeting for March 1st based on that, on whatever the decision state comes out and, and make a decision then as to whether or not we want to move forward with some changes in the town of Braintree. Okay. So with that, I'll open it up to public comments. Again, I would, I'd like to limit it to what's on the agenda. And by all means, if, if you have a question or a comment you want to make tonight and we're not able to answer it, because it's not really a Q and A, it's just make your comment, and we will get back to you either through email or phone call. So again, with that, Mr. Lee, do you want, are there any hands?
There are, and I would have to move him over. Mr. Cass, I believe you can speak.
Mr. Cass?
Mr. Cass?
Oh, I was on, I was on, you, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry about that. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. So I have two items. One is about the high school and the work that's being done there, and the second one is on communications. So the first one on the high school, thank you so much for the continuing reports, Maek Kukhors, and I'm glad to see that we're making progress with it. But I urge the school committee and also citizens here in Braintree, we've had this situation with the high school where, I think Maek Kukhors said this back in the fall, which is, thank goodness, you know, we're doing all this due diligence with electrical plumbing and sewer because we're finding some issues that need to be addressed that might turn into crisis. So my question is, why on earth can we not do that with all the other schools and probably find similar crisis and head them off? So I urge the school committee to do something about that and look at the other school buildings in the same way that we're looking at the high school. The other point is on communications, two points there. One, thank you so much for putting this on a Zoom meeting, and I encourage the school committee to continue that process into the future. As you may not be aware, we have parents and they have kids, and they can't always bring them to the meeting themselves. And I understand that this is remote going forward, but when we do go back in person, I think that it will encourage more public comment as we saw of the pandemic. And the last point I would like to make on, a public comment on communications is, I was very, very disappointed in the former school committee in the way that they handled the vote for Mr. Lee. I thought that there wasn't sufficient public notice given. I realized that there was public notice on that Monday, and then there was a meeting that afternoon, and I attended that meeting remotely, and there was no mention that there was going to be a meeting on the Wednesday. Now, you may have kept to the letter of the law, but I feel as if there was no notice to the public in that way. And I would ask the school committee in the future to give more notice to citizens about an important matter like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cass.
So next is Caitlin. Caitlin, if you wait one second, you should be able to speak. Caitlin, are you with us?
Are you on mute, Caitlin?
Caitlin, you're muted.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes. Yeah, now, yep.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for, thank you for your time, and thank you for having this meeting. As a parent, and I'm representing other parents as well, speaking on their behalf, I would just like to say thank you for considering this mask mandate as it has obviously has a, you know, it's, it impacts a lot of people and negatively and positively in some situations. And now that we are heading into the spring season and this, the mandate will be reevaluated after the 28th, I believe, by the commissioner. I ask that you consider all facts and all people involved in this mandate and how it does have a lot of negative effects. Myself, as a parent of two children in the schools, I've had to pay thousands of dollars out of pocket for speech therapy. I've had to deal with anxieties with some depressions, and the suicide rate is at an all-time high for children. As, I mean, I can send links to these studies and data as well, and the CDC also just recently came out and said that cloth masks are no longer effective in preventing COVID-19, as we know, many children are wearing cloth masks. And so we see the cases go down. Braintree Urgent Care recently cut hours and their employees last week stating that the surge is over and the cases are down. And I do take everyone's health into consideration when I'm saying, making this comment. Please, we've all been through this. We've all seen the ups and downs of it all, and I would just like everyone to consider that when this comes up as, in later date.
Certainly will. Thank you.
And we have one more, if you just give me a second. Tara Crispin is our next speaker.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Wonderful. Um, I just had a quick question to find out if there was any forward movement with the hiring of all the open positions that we've had. I know we have a number of higher level positions that we're trying to fill. I didn't know if the positions were being reposted or if we have some candidates. Thank you.
Mr. Lee, do you want to give a brief?
Yep, let me. Yeah, let me, I'm lousy at doing two things at once. We are still in process with most of those administrative positions. At this point, none of the search committees have asked to repost any of the positions. There have been some candidates forwarded to my office for review. A few of the positions are actually school committee advised selections. So we would be looking at bringing successful candidates to the school committee in early March. So there has been progress. Again, no search committee has asked to repost at this point, but not all the processes are completed yet.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Madam Chair, that's all of the hands that I can see that have been raised.
Okay. So our next meeting will be Monday, March seventh, unless there is a reason that we need to meet earlier on the first. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon and a second by Ms. Saros, I believe. Roll call vote. Maek Kukoros.
Aye.
Mr. Devon.
Aye.
Ms. Cabla-Mear.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.